Adjustments to the agenda, we'll start with the animal ordinance adoption.
That was the one we talked about last time and you went through it and left you the copies.
This, this is something.
Oh, yeah.
Been in effect, right?
Yeah, you weren't here.
I wasn't here.
Not really, because we didn't have an ordinance for other animals, other than dogs and wolf hyenas.
Good.
So Kerry took care of that and fixed that.
Good. The only thing I wonder about on this care is it says it needs to be posted in three places in the town, public places in the town. And, you know, I don't know, it's tough sometimes to find three public places in town to post it.
Well.
Because here is not considered known, right?
No, it can be when it's written like that. Sometimes it'll say the town clerk's office plus three others. Is that how it says it?
Yeah.
But we can do the library.
Okay.
It's another one that we use too.
And the other thing that I had was livestock may at the discretion of the select board be sold, transferred to a main site or rest area, or the organization who work for mainly destroyed. They can't be given away, if like it's a farm animal or something to a farmer?
Not under the law.
No? Okay.
I mean, we can set the price.
As I say, you can't.
You can sell them.
You can.
You can sell them to a, a third party, but you can't give them one.
So is this, I didn't even know there was enough livestock in town that would get two?
We've had quite a few different complaints and things over the last year, which is surprising. Uh, cows are the big one.
Yeah. Yeah.
Chickens, goats.
Chickens, chickens are another one that.
That complaints on.
Just have more of them around, I understand that.
We need to have a lot more.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I try to get them to come down to my house.
Yeah, well, at least lay their eggs and go home.
Then they go home.
Someone else feed them, that's where I'd do it. All right. Oh, looks good.
So you can make a motion to adopt it this year.
So I make a motion that we adopt the civil ordinance regulating livestock running at large. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. That'll be good moving forward, Dan, for the next few years, you'll be able to use this.
Yes.
I'll have you sign my copy here, all of you.
Okay.
Okay, you, you've got one?
I got one, I just saw it.
No one's doodled on it?
Nope.
And then we'll go through the normal stuff for the ordinance of putting in the newspaper and posting it.
Yep.
Thank you. So that next one is a letter, so you missed that too Larry, that's, Dan is gonna write, be able to write municipal tickets for this, um, for dogs and for the livestock that ordinance that we just did. So this, the judicial bureau needs you to designate that Dan can do that and I'm gonna be designated as doing the records.
Okay.
So that was the, that was the letter that they need.
Yeah.
To get that moving. Dan will get assigned a number. And we've already put in to order new tickets, because the ones we had left over from Jim, there's more updated ones.
So do we need to do a motion?
Uh, I think you just need to sign it.
Just me here?
Yeah.
All right. Dennis with a MURP update?
Yeah. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, Mike and I just wanted to update you, don't really get any action first today, but just wanted to tell you a little bit about where we are. Um, we had a consultation with CX, the company that did the original, um, energy audits of the, of different town buildings. And, um, they would be available to do some pre-construction, um, consultation work to put together a scope of work for the, um, for putting out to bid, um, as well as bringing the, um, folks from each of the buildings together to kind of have a kickoff meeting, to kind of do a walkthrough of, of what would happen or what would likely happen in each building. Um, they would put together scope of work that could be, um, put out to bid. They've already done the walkthroughs of the building to do the original audits, so they kind of are a couple of steps ahead, having already been here and, and seen the buildings and, and what needs to be done. Um, so they, that kind of gives them a jumpstart in being able to put together the next piece of it. We're also in touch with, Monday night, we're gonna have a Zoom meeting with, uh, the folks from, uh, the town of Albany, Vermont, which also has a similar MURP grant, but they're quite a bit further ahead in terms of getting their construction going. So, uh, NVDA's consultation with us suggested we talk to them about steps they've taken and strategies and thought it would be a good partnership. So Mike and I are gonna meet with them on, on Monday night, a couple of their reps to do that. Um, I've talked with Kerry and Lisa and we would propose or recommend that we are eligible to apply for 20% of the funding upfront. We could apply for up to 30% if we had outstanding invoices now, which we don't. We can get roughly $79,000 upfront to, uh, begin to pay as, as invoices come in. Kerry has agreed to put some numbers together with me, for me, and I'll, I can write the draft of, um, a proposal to, to submit, um, to our funding, to the grant funder, to, uh, to get that, those funds, if that's agreeable to the board. Uh, let's see, what else are we? I think Mike sent each of you an email that showed the, um, the proposal from CX in terms of kind of an outline of what they, what they provide, um, in doing that. We're also talking with them and talking with NVDA about some type of project management. CX will not do project management, they'll make sure that we get the proper bid language together. They'll make sure that the quality of the work, they can come in and do some auditing of the work to make sure it's done according to the specs, but they won't oversee the project itself. And, um, so we're kind of working on some possible ideas for, for contract management. We can use up to 20% of funds, um, for non, non-construction related work. Um, so this is probably a good use of some of that money. The amount of money we're likely to spend with CX in this startup work is somewhere between five and $7,000, maybe, maybe up to 10.
Yeah.
So that's, whereas moving slow, the other thing I need to, because the buildings are all 50 years and older, um, they have to have, all of our construction plans have to have a review from, uh, Vermont Historical Association. So it doesn't sound like a big deal, it's not like we're dealing with major historic buildings like some towns are. Um, but they do, um, need to see our plans and kind of do a sign off for us as we move forward. So that's another thing we're working on.
Good. I'm good with moving forward with that, buddy.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate your in thought and the work you're putting into it, you and Mike and, uh?
Mike will be home, Mike's gonna be back in a few days.
Yeah.
And we'll work on getting the meeting with, with CX together if that sounds acceptable.
And so this consultant group will recommend what, what the phases are, I mean?
Yeah, and they've already done some of that in the original, you know, obviously it's, it's tightening up the buildings first.
Yeah.
And then working on internal, um, components, such as heat pumps and making sure the boiler is what we need and that kind of thing.
Yeah.
So tightening up the envelope of the building first, then internal systems. And then depending on what money is left, looking at like solar panels and battery storage.
The solar stuff would be at the very end.
At the end.
Yes, yes. All right, no, I think it's important, I think this is our face of the town, this, these, this building, the fire department and...
The highway department.
Well, highway department, yeah.
You're getting, you're getting into that stuff too.
But, you know, I just feel it's, putting money into them is a thing to do, because I don't foresee a, a new facility being built in the, it'll be in the way future, be, be beyond my years, I think. So, appreciate your effort.
Yeah, and does this sound okay in terms of applying for the money, is that acceptable to the board?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Don't make it easier on Lisa, she'll know where she, money's coming from, and when she starts paying. We don't want to steal it from Harold's, we can't.
I'm spending all the money, so why am I even stealing it?
Well, okay, no, that sounds, I'm, we're all good with it, yeah, yeah. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thanks.
All right. Oh yeah, now we're naming a private road. What's that all about?
Well, it's on your map.
Okay.
So it's off Railroad Street.
Oh, it's, um...
So now there's four properties out there that needs to have its own name.
Yeah.
Cornerstone Lane.
Someone recommended that?
Yep.
Have they all agreed to it that were on there?
Yeah. That sounds good to me.
Brent, will you add anything?
The, uh, what triggers, what triggers the, uh, what triggers the naming is that you can only have two addresses off of a common driveway.
Hello?
And so somehow we ended up with three, and now they want the fourth one. And so, um, Tom, Tom knows what we went through with, when we changed the, all the addresses and... So by changing their address and then there'll have to be a letter from the town notifying these people that their addresses have changed, and that has to go on file, of course, with all the other letters. Because in, in the future, someone could question, well, you, I don't understand why your address is different than it was.
Yeah.
Okay, so you must have moved, and so they, they will request a letter from the town of when that address was changed, so... We've got some other ones that have been, that as we do in the audit, uh, going through that, that have been changed, so... Um, some of them are as simple as, oh, they don't get any mail there, they're just, just gonna change the number, but that still should be, they should still get official notification from the, from the town that that number has changed. Some people, like these people, they're gonna have to change everything. All of their bank accounts, all of their license, you know, everything has to change, so it's a big deal to, uh... And they seem, they seem fine with it.
Yeah.
So, well.
They're a nice group.
Yeah.
Isn't there some stipulation between lane and drive, depending on?
We, excuse me, street and road, we try to reserve for town. Lakeside Drive was always Lakeside Drive, so we didn't, we didn't change that to Lakeside Street. We thought we would, that probably wouldn't go over really good. But, so basically, if it's a, if it's a drive or a lane, it's a private. So that the respondents know that, that triggers, uh, okay, so that's a, that's private. And, uh, so that's what we try to do. But there's no, as far as I'm aware of, there's any difference between drive and lane, it's just preference. Yeah. So, we've been working with, with the board, um, and we've got an awesome board. The 911 Board that, that works on this stuff. Last night, um, I changed, I, I verified with, uh, with the puffers. They had to do some changing on their sugar house and, and their garage. And so, I notified him late yesterday afternoon. And so, um, 8:30 last night, I got an email from the guy, said, "Yeah, thanks for doing that and, and I'll, I'll put that in, in place." So, you know, they're, they're really dedicated and detailed, um, those guys that are working on it, so... And they've always been excellent to work with, so...
So is, what's this look like, Kerry handles it from here or can you?
I, I won't be writing any letters.
So?
And keeping track of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, you know, but, one more thing for Kerry.
You've got it before Kerry.
There's nothing else to do.
No, no.
So letters to the four property owners to tell them, and you're gonna tell me the numbers, so?
Yep, yep, I'll give you the numbers and, uh, and so, any of the ones that we've changed, the, I've, I've been in the office before and they've requested, when we did that major change of all of the houses, they've requested a letter because they've got this account that was at a different address.
So you've communicated with everybody, yeah?
Yep, I've communicated with them before we did any, any changes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Just smooth sale of that.
There's some, you know, there's some minor ones that we, that we added that didn't have numbers, so, um, and it was, uh, there was a corn, Coors Drive up in, on the way, they put a different driveway in and, um, with the new map, new, new autos that they got, they said, "Well, that, that's changed." Okay, and then we had another one, we're in South County, the guy noticed that they've been a driveway put in and it was a little building. And so, um, so he, it's really, um, it really, they've really done pretty good detailed stuff, so... And I've been going through and editing, um, changing use and that type of thing on buildings, so...
Well, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't know if Kerry's gonna, because if that's worth, worth...
Yeah.
We thank you for your...
But as I say, it needs to be, it needs to be documented and record kept in, uh, in the office of these major changes. If we need, if we put a number out, then I don't believe that it needs to be, somebody requested it, and we just talked about the number.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
So this is an actual change, so it needs to be documented?
This is a change of address.
Yeah.
Right. So then when they apply for jobs, they say, "Well, you haven't lived at that address very long."
Yeah, because that is in the loop of it too.
If I can get a copy of the letter, I'll put it in the property records.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, tax authorization, tax sale authorization. Okay?
So I contacted, uh, James Farlow, he's in, I think he lives in Peachton, but he's in Danville. He, we, I've seen him at trainings and very competent, so I just sent him an email and he put together this... I mean, I gave him the information, but he put together this letter, so the select board has to approve a tax sale, that's part of the process. So this is the paper, the properties that are more than two years delinquent. Has, you know, have to be delinquent for at least a year. So this is the list, this is him, that, you know, it, it'll be a fee that gets, most of it tagged to the, to the tax sale. The person who either buys it or redeems it ends up paying. And then the other portion, it will go to the town. So he'll start with, you know, a letter to everybody explaining. We'll do that March, after March 1st, because that's when the interest, you know, interest starts every month, so we'll have a fresh, updated list for him with accurate figures, and he'll send one out right at the beginning of March, a letter to everybody. And then, see what that generates and then go to the next, each process, tax sale probably a couple of months.
So, the letter goes out, we see what the response is, and then after that, we determine?
Yeah, and then, then the more detailed work will happen to the properties.
Yeah.
You know, a lot, I mean, this doesn't include the people who are making payments and...
Yeah.
You know, all those people that have set up payment agreements.
These, this listed just no activity on these, for two years. Yeah, at least two years.
You know, I will say, one, two have reached out, nothing came of it, one started a payment plan and then stopped. You know, and the deal with the payment plan is after two, if two months go by, haven't received anything. It's like null and void, basically, the payment plan, so one person falls into that.
Good.
So I signed it, Larry has to sign it, I'll get it off to him, and then beginning of March, he'll, he'll start with the letters.
He'll start and then you'll come back at us with the next step. Sounds good to me, how about you two? Yep. Okay, next. Fee adjustment for community building rental and subdivision permits.
So that's the next paper I, I gave you. So the community building, I'll just give you a little story. So it, it's its own job to begin with, the rental of it. So we're getting more and more people from out of town wanting to rent it, I think because our price is so cheap. People from North Haverhill, people all over calling. And they either know that the price is cheap, or they ask me what the price is, I tell them and they're, I can tell, they're like, "Oh my gosh," yeah. So I think my recommendation would be leave the resident price the same, $10 an hour. That's, I think that's reasonable, we're paying taxes on it, we're, uh, it's in our town. But I would, I think for the, the non-residents, going up to, I would dare even say $25 an hour. And I thought about just 20, it was 15, so it's a $10 increase.
$25 an hour is pretty cheap.
Pretty, pretty.
Right, and I, that's a... It's a large space. Yeah, it's a large space, you have access to this kitchen. You have two bathrooms, you have all sorts of stuff, so... I mean, unless you want to go, whatever, you, your decision, but I just, I just think the non-resident rate needs to increase. And I actually, last minute change, so we do a $50 deposit, which the person gets back after, you know, everything's fine and taking your trash and whatever, and very rarely have I, I think one time, I've had, I've kept a deposit. But the problem is, and I don't know if this, in my mind, people are not, this sounds so stupid, but they're not coming back to get their deposit. They pay the deposit in cash, if it's a check, I'll just rip it up or something, right? So I'm not mailing $50 cash in the mail, so people never come back for it. And I have stacks of $50 with people's names on it, and I've emailed them, I've seen them in Walmart and told them. And, once in a while, so I feel like $100 you're gonna come back and get.
Yeah.
And if, if it's a check or cash, it doesn't get deposited, I just hold the check, you know, so it's not like, even if you didn't have the money, but you know you're gonna clean up your space and everything, you can give me a $100 check, that's just gonna be shredded or given back to you. So I think, in my mind, having more for someone to have to come back, that they're gonna come back for $100. I mean, do they, do they have to fill out a form? Yeah. And with their name and address and everything? We could just deposit the money and cut them a check back. I mean, I know it's a pain. That's a pain. You could get rid of the money that way.
You're the first person I've ever heard that wanted to get rid of money.
Well, I, I'm almost thinking of putting in the paper, if you don't come get your deposit after 30 days, it's a donation to the community.
Oh, that's what I was gonna say.
Or maybe put that on, put it on the, um, the form that they fill out. Yeah. Note that if you don't come back and pick it up after 30 days, it's, it's ours, and then we don't have to worry about it. Yeah, so whichever.
Yeah, I would say that.
I would say do that.
Okay, so leave the 50, but add that.
Um, no, it's still not a bad idea to do the $100, but...
Yeah, because if there's damage. Yeah, I mean, I keep it anyway, I mean, you know, we keep it till we know everything's okay. Okay, and then I'll just add that to the form that they sign. 30 days? Long enough? Yeah.
Yes.
And we'll stick with the 25 and 10?
Yeah, yeah.
For the size of the space, I mean, I don't think you can... Yeah, I, I meant to call the North Haverhill there on the Commons, that one, that's a lot smaller, and I almost think... Yeah, but it's, it's pretty nice in there. I mean, it's cute, let's just say, because it's small, but I think that's like a hundred and something an hour. So, I mean, people have come here and literally put a bouncy house in there and had a party. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's a valuable asset we have.
Right, I think so too, and I think we should earn a little money from it.
Yeah, from the non-residents.
Okay, thank you. The subdivision permit is currently $75, and now that, that's happening a little more often. It's four pages that are recorded, that's $60. A Mylar survey is recorded, that's $25. A notice has to go in the newspaper, that's $72. So it's costing the town money, because we're not, it's costing us more than what we're getting in the permit. So we talked about, so that's roughly $157. Either upping it to 150, or I think Dan suggested 175, a permit.
Most towns are doing 175 now, because of the recording fees.
Yeah, I don't think we should.
Yeah, I don't think...
You shouldn't even lose $2, right?
Right, you don't wanna lose money on it.
Yeah, or no, it's, no, I would say...
So up it to 175?
175, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
This year, I'm sure it'll have to go up next year, because everything will go up.
Well, there's four different bills on Act 50 running through right now, for Act 250, I mean, it could affect that.
Could, yeah. All right, we'll move on to departments. Harold?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we're rolling along, getting through, um, minor breakdowns, but nothing major. I was on Marketplace the other night looking, which is always a dangerous place to be, but we do not have a spare plow for our mowers. So, I mean, like mine is wore out, like, I mean, it's 10 years old, it's wore out. I tried to order parts for it, it can't even get parts for it. Um, and, you know, it's a lot of welded and stuff to get it back to fair condition. I won't say it's gonna be new by any means. So I was on Marketplace and I found this plow over Burlington Way. Which is for 1,500 bucks. So if you, I thought it'd be nice if it's spare plow. You know, during the winter, we have some days that we're puttering around, we could actually work on the other ones. If we had spare.
And that's the same model as what we have?
It's a different brand, but it's the same thing.
Same model.
Um, I actually, I've run Penko's before and I always thought Penko worked so much better than any other one, personally, but, um, but for 1,500 bucks, I mean, that's what the parts are gonna cost to fix the new, that old one.
Yeah.
And it's already got parboiled cutting edges on it, which we just bought for this one for, like, $3,000. So the cutting edges on it are worth what he's asking for.
Do you know if you can get parts for this one?
Oh, yeah.
Now, you can get parts, you know, it's...
I can, but you just don't have any.
The time.
Well, they do in Canada.
Yeah.
But when I talk to the distributor, they're like, "Yeah, we're supposed to get a shit..." But, when I talk to the distributor, they're like, yeah, we're supposed to get a shit by the end of February or something. Maybe. Well, that's not very promising.
I mean, in, the, that truck, of course, we made a decision last year to put money into it, put it out five years, so. That puts more stress on the plow we got, I, I would say, I would say, how often does a plow break on you? I mean, your preventive maintenance is pretty good, right, I mean?
It's, it's when they wear out, it's when the slides, I mean, that thing constantly leaves, I mean.
And would this fit on fill-ups too, or?
It'd fit on both of them.
Yeah.
And it actually comes with a frame that we could modify to put on front of the grader. If ever need, if ever need, be a funnel project to modify that, that fit on that, to, you know, truck goes down, we could actually go out and plow, lay with the grader.
I mean, the pictures, you can look, you know, the pictures.
It's all about the help, it's all, I mean.
I, we've got the money in the maintenance, right? Where would we take that money from?
Equipment reserves.
Equipment reserves?
Yeah, I, I go through money in my maintenance pretty quickly. Quicker than I wanted, but, I mean, it is what it is. But, you know, we, we agreed on thirty thousand to spend on that truck.
Yeah.
You know.
And that's what we've taken back out of.
We spent right around twenty on it.
Yeah.
So.
How would we get it? You'd have to go over the-
Go over and get it with Dun Druck.
Dun Druck?
Put it right back with Dun Druck. He's got an excavator to load it.
I mean, and it's something you could use tomorrow, you, I mean, you've talked to him enough, but it's, it's-
I could put it on the truck in ten minutes and plow it.
Yeah, and then in your extra time, fix that one.
I like to have a winter project anyway. You know, one year we built a roller, one year we did the, the trailer that was given to us, we finished that up. Uh, we built a hot box, we've done different projects during the winter, when you have downtime, it's nice to have a project to work on. So I have a plow in there that you could-
Yeah, I mean, have you, have we ever had a plow for a grader?
Yeah, we used to have a, we did have a plow on the grader, yeah, we had to go.
I mean, it's not gonna go to waste, right?
Not once again, I'll put it on the truck, start ripping the other one down.
Run down, and, I, I mean, I, to me, it makes sense, what about?
Yeah, I have no problem with it.
You know, like, at the perfect situation, we rebuild our plows during the summer, doesn't happen. I mean, you forget about it till fall.
If you, why don't you do it before July, what, six or so, whenever the floods come?
But, it doesn't happen, like, I mean.
No, I, I, I'd say, we don't need a motion for that, do we?
Yeah, just over a thousand bucks.
When was that thousand buck rule made?
Uh, it used to be five hundred, it was just a phrase, dude.
Okay, all right, I make a motion that Harold purchases a plow that will fit both trucks for fifteen hundred, right? For fifteen hundred.
For fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah. Good, all approved, aye, okay.
So I'll have, I was supposed to bring a P O tonight, but I forgot it. So I will have a P O in the office tomorrow morning, if someone can sign it, so Lisa can make out that check. I'll get her the information of the guy. And I'll get the check, I'll go pick it up.
Sure.
Will you be around to be able to sign it?
If I remember. No, I'll stop it. I mean, you're not going tomorrow, are you?
No, no, at least I'll have the check till next week.
Yeah, yeah, okay, no, I'll make sure I-
No, the guy's real good, he'll hold it.
Yeah.
He looks a real nice guy.
Yeah, no.
Harold, I got a question for you.
Nope, didn't do it.
Had somebody ask me, um, about doing a curb cut up, you know where they had that right-of-way issue, up at the lake?
Where that container was and stuff?
Yeah, if there was a curb cut down there, is that town or state?
I saw, Boulder Beach is all town.
Okay.
The whole road.
The state has no part in that there, okay, I'll-
State maintains that for us, salts it for us, supplies it. Because we do see on Pond Road and Swab.
Yeah.
That's the only reason the state's on that road.
Okay.
But that's all town.
All right, for some reason, I thought it was state down to the end of the pavement.
Wish it was. It used to be up state right up to the beach.
I know.
I got another one for you, Harold, I don't, I said I'd send it to you, and I didn't. Andrew Smith from the town of Ragate sent an email. They have been petitioned to discontinue a class four town highway that ends at the town line. The road is our number thirty-seven, but we would only be discontinuing the class four section that is on the map is untraveled. Looking at our map, Groton's map, it looks like it might have continued to the Glover Road. As your town highway sixty-four. Also untraveled. So he's asked, so we're, they're at the early stages of discontinuance, and their attorney suggested we, be a good idea to reach out to the Groton Slat Board to double-check that we don't object to what happened.
Oh, you can go through that again?
No, not anymore.
Okay, and John and Mary Ann Lund are on our side, and Steve General is on their side. So, I, I mean, I gotta know, I, I mean-
No, I, I don't think, I don't think they want people down there.
Yeah.
I know that road extremely well, and it's not possible.
Yeah, so, so, we're, we're good with them.
Yeah, I-
Do we discontinue our side of it, I mean, how's, what's?
It's never been kept up.
It's never been, so.
And I've been down that road, in the six years I've been here, three times.
Yeah.
Because we were doing class four roads when I first started, so I took every Slat Board member around every class four road, so I've been down that road three times.
Yeah.
Now, now, I've never been down that, so.
As long as the landowners are good with it.
That the landowners are good with it?
I mean, but-
What's the harm of just letting it be?
There's nothing.
Because we don't really need to go-
We made a right-of-way, is all we did.
Why would they be going through this? To discontinue?
Probably just to get it off the mats and get it.
Yeah.
I mean, if they have one landowner that owns it all, I mean, like, uh, Ingles up there on Buzzzy's Road. They would love if we threw up that class four section across from the house. I mean, they would love it, and they own all the land. It's just the process you gotta go through to do it.
To do, yeah. So we got no problems with it, from anybody here, um, okay, I'll just reach out to them.
I don't see a problem.
Yeah, but, but, we don't need to really do anything, just, unless the landowner came to us, maybe, or?
If the landowner threw a fit about it, but-
Yeah.
I don't think he's going to.
He, yeah, yeah, okay, all right, that was it, easy. Anything else, Harold?
I think that's all good.
New truck's going good?
New truck's going good.
Yeah, perfect.
Uh, the blade still isn't showing up for it yet, but, um, I talked to the distributor, and they should, it should be here, either this, probably next week sometime. Because we're starting to get, starting to wear it out, the one, the new one that came on it already, but it's working good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you got anything from Lisa?
Uh, just the, the town reports were mailed a little earlier than expected, but it's a good thing. And I think she asked you about the bank statement thing?
Yep, last night at the time, I already did that.
Yeah, that was it.
Okay. Carrie?
I just have, uh, so FEMA's winding down. Have a meeting again next week. Pretty much everything has been sent. The, the last category is like my hours, so that will be the last thing to go, but everything has pushed to the next phase, so. No more questions have been asked, so hopefully, hear something in this year.
Yeah.
Um, the only other thing I was gonna do is remind people about licensing their dogs, have to April first, anytime from now to April first. If they could get that done, I think I'm on number twenty-eight, so not very many so far.
How many do you usually have?
Three hundred.
Yeah. Dan will have his work, I doubt for.
Yeah.
Dan will have his new tickets to go. That was it.
Okay, thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Dorothy?
Um, I'm just having a lot of business as usual, and a lot of, working on a lot of projects. Um, and then next week, Thursday, I'll be going to Lake Maury for, um, Nimmerk is doing an all-day workshop, so I'll be going down for that. Other than that, everything's good. Um, I've communicated with Nimmerk, and hopefully, within the next month or so, they'll send somebody to start helping with some of the, um, appraisals that we need to do. I've made, gotten them a list, so there's, um, I think I've got ten that I've identified so far, that are building permits, new houses, additions, that sort of thing, so they know what the scope of what needs to be done, so, we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Dan?
Tuesday, I went out looking for bats, we're not gonna be here with the person from, from Block Fish and Wildlife on the buyout program. Uh, so we went to the six properties, knowing there were no bats there, looking for bats. Uh, if we found any bats, which we weren't going to find, they wouldn't do anything, because when the buildings get tore down, the bats would move. So, it's a FEMA grant that she was working on, so it was a tremendous use.
Yeah.
Talked about Little Italy Culvert Project. I'm gonna be meeting Sasha Piller, who's twenty-seventh for that, I'll get back to you after that. I'm not sure exactly what that entails, because I haven't been through this before. Zoning Board of Adjustment will handle it. Had a couple of dog complaints, uh, took care of them. That's about it.
Okay, thank you. All right, Fire and Past. Looks like we have no one here from Fire and Past. Okay. Update on ongoing grants?
I just have one update for the drainage project, reached out to Alliance, because they'll be ripping up this floor to do the strain, and they're thinking in the next month. We reminded them town meeting day wouldn't be a good day to have their equipment out here and be doing it, so hopefully, it's, it's not that day. And then we'll get the, I don't know that it includes them painting it, so. Work on that, out of Community Building Reserve money to touch it all back up if needed.
Okay. Open to the public? Okay.
Name's Morris Ducey, and I live down on Railroad Street. Got a little issue with the plow truck driver there on Super Bowl Sunday. You know, we have a speed limit on the road. And the thing that bothers me the most, you know, not putting safety first. Big, big issue. And if you would, you know, if you come down my house, look at the snowbanks are so high, it's from him. I probably get three, four inches of snow in there. When he plows, I get four feet in my driveway. Because he caters to that, my next-door neighbor, he's a firefighter. He stays away from his driveway, goes wide on the left-hand side, comes down the hill. He's got his wing and plow, so he takes the whole road. Snowbank's too high, can't push the snow over, pushes it all the way down until it dumps my air. Then he goes down through, and he is cruising, it was Sunday. This last Sunday, he changed his tone. Anyways, when he gets done, he comes up, goes to the left-hand side of the road, and scoops out the next-door neighbor's front of his driveway, and sanded it, and that's a fact, he did it on Super Bowl Sunday. And I know almost everybody on the road that already cleaned their driveways. You know, and then you come through at eight o'clock at night and bury them. You know, this last storm, why did you even plow? Then you come through eight o'clock in the morning on the next day and follow it up. Well, my concern is, that's safety, that wasn't job one. Probably sick of the snowstorm, I'm sick of it. But not if he's gonna be out there serving the public. And I'll be careful. And we have a lot of kids on the street, unfortunately, we don't have so many right now. And little kids, I know not to make good decisions sometimes. And I do, you know, that is an issue. And I don't know if he does this on his own, I don't know if that's what he's told to do at the town garage. You know, somebody should seriously look into it.
Good.
You know, I can make it uglier, I'm trying to keep this-
Um, and it was brought to my attention, because Dan caught me here. And we, we had a procedure we went through, Dan communicated with Harold, and Harold talked to the employee.
That's why, why is he catering to somebody that works for this town?
I, I don't know that he is.
Well, no, he's clearly, this is going on here, I've never seen him, he went, see, this is what bothers me. Safety, right, we normally drive on one side of the road, going one way, we drive on the other. He clearly comes back up that road and goes to the left-hand side of the road. And he goes right in and scoops his driveway out, and he sanded it this time. Now, this isn't like an accident, but if you wanna get back to safety, you're on the wrong side of the road. Just because you got flashing lights, you still supposed to stick to the rules of the road, right?
Yes, yes.
You know, another thing that bothers me, just, you know, there's nothing we can probably do about this one. Your Slat Board before you could, had a complaint come here. And nothing happened, not one thing. Now, and it was also a safety issue. An employee for this Grutton, or us people, he came to my house on a dog complaint, wait, it became quite an issue. And he admits to me while he's visiting and picking up the dog, I thought he was gonna pick it up, that's why I had it. He just let it go, he admitted he had been drinking, that's why he didn't come to the park. But a half hour later, he shows up at the park, and same thing, we just kind of, we talked. And nothing's done, I think that one's a state and federal law. You know, I don't, and I know this issue is so different, because the whole Slat Board is gone now.
Go ahead, Dan.
I will say that, that I took the complaint to Larry, I also took it to Harold. And Harold handled it, and these last snowstorms, Phelps done better.
He did.
He's done much better. So I think we handled it in the correct way, we filed the complaints, went through the proper channels, and got handled, and I think, I think it's gonna be good from now. If it's not, then we'll be back.
Yeah, if it's not, I, I feel as a Slat Board, we've done our due justice to let the chain of command work.
I did, no, I melted.
So, so, yeah, so, we don't need to escalate it further up, you know, we need, he was spoken to. He come back next week and done, did the speed limit he was supposed to, and, um, and personally, I'm not gonna micromanage it, but you will tell us if he's not doing what he's supposed to, right? And that's, that's-
The problem is right now, though, you know, from all these snowstorms, we have no place to put the snow. You know, we need to get it winged back, because you can't push it up, you can't wing up a four or five-foot snowbank. And the road's only gonna get narrower and narrower as it goes.
Yeah.
Needs to be pushed back, the loader come down and crowded back.
I totally agree, but there's only two of us, and, I mean, we've been out for two days straight, with a loader and a backup. We haven't got the wing on the grader yet, because we've been out with a loader and backup.
Yeah, I get it.
But the wing's there, ready to go on the grader, so that we can get out, but it's been snowing every day.
Well, I get it, and I plowed it there. You know, I put so much in my driveway, I wouldn't have had to plow it.
Mother Nature didn't put any in, right, you wouldn't have plowed either.
Totally agree, man, I do. You know, we can't take, you know, we can't control that, you guys have been doing this for years. Look at this.
Well, and every year's different, you gotta, we gotta admit, this last couple weeks, we got dumped on, you know, and, yeah, so-
Everybody, you know, it's not, I'm not picking on him.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I get, you know, the comments, every town's got it, right?
Yeah.
So somehow, we all gotta meet in the middle and, you know, work with this.
Right, and I, Harold's gonna get there, right?
I heard it, I know. I, I've tried putting the banks back a little bit with my little tractor, my bucket only goes eight feet, and I'm at the top. I don't, I don't know where to go.
No.
I mean, you know, I've been through this, and it's-
I-
So, unless it stops snowing sometime soon, we're still gonna have the issue.
Yeah, well, I guess my point is, we're gonna get there, right, Harold? We're, we're working our way, I, I, you know, it doesn't matter where we, we're always gonna start at the wrong end of town, when you're doing some of this stuff, you know?
Well, we're trying to prioritize-
In some people's eyes, we're not, but we will-
No, you're in a position, somebody's not gonna be happy.
Right.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I mean, like yesterday, I was down here by the church, trying to get that snow so you could see when you pull out of there.
No, that is probably one of your worst points.
I mean, we gotta kind of prioritize and-
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't feel that we're neglecting anybody, we're just, there's, there's a time, you know, there's two people, and there's so much time in the day.
I've got one more question, it's not even me.
Well, no, that's, that's-
It's, uh, what's your, you know, your order of plowing roads? You know, I, doesn't, I just wonder-
So we do have a winter maintenance road planned.
Okay.
But you can have the other ones.
Late getting a plow.
So-
We're the next to last room.
But, so we have to do bus routes, while the blacktops are first. Path of Spring Road, I mean, the major blacktops, Path of Spring Road and Mindre Hill. Uh, bus routes, get next priority. Then we go in order to do everything most efficiently that we can, and with the plow, I mean, obviously, you know, the plow only goes one way. So if you take everything to the right as you go, like Phillip can do that whole side of three oh two in one load, so he goes up and takes everything to the right, and he goes back, takes everything to the right. Because there's bus routes up that side, the ones on this side are on Path of Spring Road. There's actually back road bus routes on that side, so he takes care of that side first.
Yes, you know, and I think the biggest problem is on our road, is you try to plow coming downhill. If you try coming up the hill, like you, Lululele or somebody first, they come up the hill.
But when you swing with that plow, you're only plowing as much.
Well, that's the problem there, he's only plowing the whole other side of the road, and then he's got a trap between the whole bank, both banks, and pushes it to my driveway.
And it's-
If you plow through, you're still gonna be on the right-hand side, but you're already gonna be angled with the road. This way here, he misses the corner, and crowds it in the snowbanks, and it, where's it been on both, in the first place, it's open.
But if he comes up through, say he went up Path of Spring Road, where's that snow gonna go, right in the middle of Path of Spring Road?
But if he comes up the road and turn into our street, it's gonna be no different than it is when he comes down, other than you're gonna be on the right-hand side of the road, when you come into our road.
But when you swing right with that plow and wing down, you got twenty-one feet of blade cleaning.
Yeah.
When you swing out of the way, you lose all your cleaning wit.
I know, no matter what, you know, it's gonna be give and take.
Right.
Alright, I think we, I think we, yeah, and I think we, you know, if you're comfortable with our, our answer that we we went through the chain, and, um, and you will, we'll know from you if, if the speeding continues, and, and Harold will get to you and move some snowbanks, I mean, that's, I, I don't think we can-
Go with that.
Go with that, and see what happens, okay? I don't think we need to do it.
Well, you want your name after a veneer complaint?
Yeah, so, so we're gonna move along. Um, the highway, the fire department, I'm not gonna address that tonight.
Okay.
I'm gonna do some follow-up, okay? Um, Carrie, I'm gonna handle this, okay?
Yeah.
I'm involved in it, and I'm gonna handle it with the person, um, so I'm not gonna go anymore with that, so. Okay, we'll sign orders, which I think they're all signed. Items for the next slate board meeting, um, I know there'll be some appointments we'll have to do, and, uh-
A lot of appointments.
Yeah, and, so-
Usually, that's just what's on there.
Yeah.
Unless something, you know, comes up.
Yeah, so-
And we won't do department updates, so.
Right.
Yeah, so we'll see everybody at town meet, hopefully, and, so I make a motion to a juror.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you, folks, thank you for your time, everybody, have a good evening.